Great, thank you. All right, well, good evening. Today is our monthly workshop for September. Today is Thursday, September 9th, 5:30 PM. We are in the central building of our conference room. After our workshop, we do have a short business meeting as well. So to begin our workshops tonight, we're going to have a new kind of monthly feature, which would be our staff spotlight, and we welcome some of our custodians here. So I'll let Mr. Fisher introduce who he invited to come and speak.
Certainly, yes. Thanks for making time for this, and gentlemen, thanks for being here. When we talked about our board professional development and the things we wanted to focus on this school year, getting to know staff and building leaders we know relatively well, department leaders we know well, but staff who are leading our buildings in different departments, in different areas, you don't always know as well. So the opportunity to come in and visit with us, and Mike and Ryan were willing to come and talk tonight about, you know, probably a beginning project we talked about was kind of what happens in the buildings in the summer. What does summer life look like for custodial maintenance staff? Which is probably one of the busiest times of the year for them as they get ready to welcome our students and staff back each fall. So I won't try to even pretend I know everything that goes on in the building. I'm working great work these guys do. So they were so gracious to come and visit with us. I'll give them a few minutes just to kind of tell you about what it is that summer looks like in their life. And then if you have questions, you can go from there. And we will get it first, and then you can get out of your evening. See what's good about that. So I'll give you a floor for a minute.
Sure. First of all, introduce myself. I'm Mike Buker. I just finished 33 years here. I've pretty much worked in every building over the years. Seen quite a lot. So basically, we had a great summer. Had a good crew this summer to do all the cleaning. The school was ready to go. They weren't behind on anything. We basically go through each classroom, clean it from top to bottom, the flat surfaces of even the light fixtures. Clean the carpets, clean the furniture, haul it out, haul it in, and do the floors, hard floors, carpets. Sometimes we strip the floors, sometimes we don't. It depends how long it's been. Then basically work around summer school too. They have to kind of move around. Change their, you know, air handlers, do some maintenance on those, on the filters. Just tend to the day-to-day operations. Maintain the pool. Boilers at the high school around year-round. So you have to check them every day and make sure they're still working good. Go through the fire extinguishers, make sure we have the company comes in, goes through those once a year. No major construction, which was nice because we've had a lot of that in the past. Wearing hard hats was not my thing. So we did get a wider door installed for Dawn Barry's date area there. So it runs these three little bikes through. That just happened, so that was nice for her. And then also added a room kind of to Luanne Ross's area. Took a wall out into the egg shop, which is kind of their washroom at one time. Burned that into her changing room for her kids. It's still kind of in the process. I mean, they're using it, but we got to put a sink in there yet. Yeah, it's bought it as far as any construction. The summer went great. I mean, it did. We had good health. Guys all got along, no problems there. And everybody, you know, everybody did their job, went good. Thank you for having me.
Mike, I got a question for you, Mike. You've been off the high school for quite a while. And I'm sure you've gone through a lot of things, seen a lot of things, been part of a lot of things. But could you tell us something about the high school that we probably don't know? That you know?
That you can share?
I mean, it's a big, big building, a lot of parts.
Well, yeah, you guys probably don't realize the mechanical rooms we have up there. There's, there's a mechanic room just for the pack, you know? Most people, you know, we have people come and work on it and they already know where it is or because it's down by the green room. Unfamiliar with that. And there's stairs that goes up just about like straight almost. There's two air handlers up to that run though, just for the pack, you know? And we got two other, we got another one that doorway goes up, you know, this locker room hallway. You know, people just don't know what's there, but they're big. They're all the, all the work is done for cooling and heating. So I just don't know anything. There's no other hidden areas there or anything.
How often do the buildings actually sit out? Not very often.
No, they don't. No, not, not the high school anyway. The high school people are harder to get. Yeah, yeah, we're swimming, you know, the summer school. Just there's always people. Then I go, do they do summer play? So, yeah, those kids are on all the time. I'll think of something else, Dave, sometime, and I'll let you know.
Good evening. My name is Ryan West. I've been in the Wasika district for six years. I'm currently the building head of the intermediate school. I'm just here tonight to touch base on a few projects that we've completed this summer. Besides getting the school ready for students and staff. First and foremost, I'd like to talk about the indoor quality improvements. We have a lot of replacements of dampers and actuators. Makes for optimal fresh air coming into the building. Make it get circulated throughout the building. Another major project that we completed is we got new carpet in our band choir rooms. That was a huge project. We took the carpet out and prepped it for the layers to come in. And we saved the district actually a lot of money by doing it on site. We painted a lot of rooms, sheetrocked. You know, keeping up with the sanitizing side of things. We still have a lot of activities in our building every day. You know, like Mike said, we just clean it and get it ready for the staff and students. You guys have any questions or?
I have one. How during the day, the day or, you know, during the week, you do also work there, right? Cleaning or whatever.
Correct.
So how do you handle to, you know, the kids are there almost all day long, right? Do you need to work like night shift or how do you find the time?
We schedule around, you know, like wax the hallway, rope it up, and go to another section. We kind of work with the people in the building to kind of coordinate. So, yeah.
During the summer, you shift most of your team to the daytime and then in the during the evening, people to right in building buildings?
We don't have anybody at night.
Oh, okay.
Really? We try to get everything work as a team during the daytime to get, you know, because there's a lot of stuff that you need multiple people to lift furniture and so on and so forth. So. Any other question?
How is it back, having kids back now? What is that? Has it changed in things for you guys now?
Yeah, I think, I think routine's good. I like, I like.
Yeah, I like routine also.
Like when they're back, it's better.
Yeah.
You know, it really is. At four, four guys that work for me, five, one during the day, and then four at night.
Okay.
And I have one guy that worked for me during the day. And then at night during the school year.
And how many at heartly?
There'd be one guy during the day and one at night. But in the summer, like Eric said, we all worked during.
I think they're working on one and a half during the, yeah.
At heartly?
Yeah.
In here?
Two and a guy at night right now and one during the day, right?
I believe so.
Yeah. The third grade left, so they eliminated a temporary position that they had last year.
So do you guys ever rotate buildings? Like if you need help, are you able to just do the same duties as if you would have to help out at the high school?
During the summer.
Yeah, somewhere.
Yeah, the guys will move around.
Revisions and stuff like that.
Yeah.
Ryan, how is it training in a new food service director?
I can appreciate you. Rossi's a nice guy.
It's a lot of coordination.
Oh, yeah, definitely.
You, no, you, Mike, you've probably got a boiler license, right?
Yeah.
Okay, Ryan, do you know?
Oh, yeah, yeah, you have.
Does the custodian for a building have to have a boiler license?
Yeah, you work up to getting a chief license. Or it takes, takes five years to get it at a minimum. So, yeah. And all the custodians get a boiler license too eventually. I mean, they'd have to go up to first class now. Not saying they always do it, but when they should or they don't pass a test. But that's a requirement. Yeah, I got mine years ago already.
It's a lot of technical work, I know, that we've looked at. Something we'll continue to talk about here too, as we expand our career pathway programs. You know, in previous sessions I've worked in, we used our custodial maintenance team as a pathway with just for some engineering and some different weather mechanics type stuff to get our high school kids understanding that's a pretty important profession. I couldn't fix any of those machines. That's what we need our, every member of our team for. So pretty valuable. Appreciate the work you do very much.
Yeah, you guys definitely are one of, a big part of what makes the district operate every single day. Absolutely.
Yep. Well, thank you, gentlemen. I appreciate you coming in tonight. And that's just kind of like what is what the board was hoping for in terms of giving chances to visit with some additional folks. And in October, we'll have a different staff spotlight to see what comes to mind. So, Brian and Mike, thanks for watching. Great job, guys.
All right, so our next topic was board professional development focus. And tonight we're going to talk about budget and finance.
Correct. Yeah, we spent some time talking particularly about the upcoming levy cycle season that we have coming up here this fall and how that works and how districts are funded. And Elizabeth will take us through a brief slideshow to kind of demonstrate visually some of what we're talking about here. But again, as we talked about, it's important to understand how the budgets and finance work. Particularly as we get into several years here, the next few years where we're talking about rights. That's when we're talking about whether or not we're going to be needing to do something facility-wise. We can manage that with our general budget. If we have to do something else, we've talked about a bond, well, part of the conversation. But we have to start by making sure we all understand the base. And so we wanted to spend, take some time with that review on that tonight, just to walk through it. Elizabeth, I'll give you the floor for a moment.
All right. So I will be sharing my screen here just a moment. And we are definitely in levy season right now. So we've been building basically the levy system over the summer. And now we're coming to the point where we're going to start engaging our school board and in talking about what our preliminary levy looks like and the whole process with the levy. So this is really just to help you become familiar and hopefully a little bit more comfortable with the overall process that goes into this on an annual basis. There we go. Okay, so some of you are.
Right now? We're not seeing your screen, so.
My screen?
No, we can hear you, but we're not seeing your screen up on our projector, so.
Caitlin, do you want to maybe take it?
Presenting.
Yeah, you may have to stop presenting, then make sure you have the right tab clicked on too. It came up earlier. Shouldn't be.
There it goes.
Good job.
Now we have it, Elizabeth.
Can you see this now?
Yeah.
Yes.
Can you see this? With like, you know what I'm telling? Sorry, can you see my presentation? Here we go. All right, okay. So really, the first one was just a title screen anyway. So here we go is the meat of some of the presentations that we were talking about. So thank you for being here today. All right. So again, many of you are very well versed in this process. Again, this is something that we talk about on an annual basis, but again, just trying to familiarize you with the process. As a reminder, really, school funding is very highly regulated. There's a lot of outside factors that play into how our levy is created. So for example, levy limits, they're usually set by state law or voter approval. The state sets specific tax policies. More often than not, they're setting specific parameters of how we can use specific funds. What's okay and what is outside of those limits. The Department of Education puts together all of the formulas and the calculations for each of the districts. We actually just got our first report today. I shouldn't say that. We got it yesterday and we reviewed it today. And so many of you have seen something similar. It's about a 40-page document full of calculations that MDE puts together based on what the state has set for limits. Our county auditor also plays a role in this when they're, they're setting market values, whether they're setting class rates. And we'll talk a little bit about that in a minute. And again, the levy cycle is also set in state statute of how that should flow. So for example, the levies, the first run reports were due to districts yesterday. And so like I said, MDE was able to provide that to us. And we actually had a workshop today and going through everything. This is just a first snapshot. So when we're taking a look at the, the report, we're looking at, okay, what pulled in? Did what we submitted to the state get pulled in correctly? This is an also an opportunity for MDE to receive feedback because as I noticed today, there were a couple of things that weren't quite there. And they realized that some of those hiccups take a little bit of a while to work through. So it's definitely a collaborative effort between districts and MDE trying to get these reports correct for, for each of the districts. So again, reports were out yesterday. The month of September is used for school boards to take a look at those. And during their school board meetings, set a preliminary levy. And this levy that we're working on now is for the 2223 business year. Levies run on a calendar cycle, but with school districts with their business year being July 1, June 30, that leaves us with the 2223 fiscal year for school districts. So we will be presenting the preliminary levy to you at our following school board meeting on the 23rd. And we'll be asking you to set a maximum amount. The reason we do that is basically what I just mentioned before. It gives us an opportunity. It gives MDE an opportunity to continue to work through some of those formula calculations. Make it, make it data incorrect. If we set a specific dollar amount, then we're, we're, basically we're stuck with that amount. When we come to our final levy in December, we're not able to adjust that other than go underneath it. We wouldn't be able to go above that. So for some reason, there was a calculation that wasn't pulling incorrectly. We wouldn't be able to maximize that levy for our district. Mid-November, the county is going to be sending out the property tax statements to our property owners. And those will also list the truth and taxation hearing dates on those. So that's very important to be taking a look at of what your prior levy was, what the proposed levy will be, and when all of those meeting dates are, whether it's the county or the school district. And then for our information, Wasika, we're going to hold our truth and taxation meeting in December. And that will be on December 16th. So we'll talk a little bit more detail of what those true adjustments would be for the 2223 school year. Trying to make it go forward here, I apologize. Okay. So these are some of the other things that play into our levy as well. So we talked a little bit about all of the different calculations that are pulled in. These top two are definitely driven by our county assessors. So changes in the market value or our property values. Something to note is if everything stayed the same in our levy, our enrollment calculations, formula calculations, 99.9% of our time, our levy will always increase from year to year just based on the premise that our property values could be increasing. So if nothing changed from year to year, regardless, our levy would more than likely still increase just based on that fact on, on property values increasing. So just something to keep in mind there. Changes in the class rates, and that just means the purpose of that property. So is it recreational, commercial, ag, residential? All of those play into the calculations for, for the levy limits. Definitely changes in enrollment. So they take a look at what our actual enrollment has been over the past historical three or four years. But then we also put in projections of what we think both our resident count would be and the students that we actually serve. So those are also playing into it. The levy then will pick up actual adjustments using our, our prior year actual counts as well as, as projections. So that, that fluctuates from year to year. Changes in levy versus state contribution. One of the reasons this changes, a couple actually, would be if a formula has changed. But there's also something called state aid equalization. So really what that means is if you have lower property tax values, you usually have a higher state aid contribution. As your property values increase, that aid contribution goes down and your levy contribution goes up. So that all just kind of depends on what that balance is in, in every single district. And of course, the last thing that definitely plays into this is voter approval or disapproval. So for example, if we went out for an operating referendum or a school bond, that also will impact the amount that's played into our levy.
Which way? Which way it would affect the amount?
Say that again, Dita. I'm sorry, I didn't hear the question.
If we approve some, you know, the referendum, it means it would go up?
Correct. And what you would do is we would actually have to go out for a vote. We would have to put it on a ballot. And the way that language is usually written is this will increase your property taxes. And we, we include tax impacts for, for, for our residents. So they would know what that tax impact would be. And then they could make an informed decision on whether they would approve it or, or disapprove that levy. And just some of the other things that are playing, have a larger, we'll say, impact on the levy that, that every district has is. So actually, this pairs quite nicely with your question, Dita. So a few years back, we did have go out to the voters. This was not an option before where the board could create operating referendum authority. So operating is for your daily operations. It's, it's for the payroll, the keeping the lights on in the building, supplies. So had gone out for an operating referendum and had passed basically a $700 per pupil unit operating referendum. As that was going through the years, back in 2013, the legislature changed some things. And they said a board could create up to $300 per pupil unit of operating referendum without going to the community for, for board approval. That didn't change anything for us. That, that still was status quo. So we didn't change anything from that $700 per pupil unit. That following year, the legislature also created another $424 per pupil unit that boards basically could create for levy authority as well. So both of these together are called local optional revenue. So you could have up to $724 per pupil unit for operating referendum without going to the community for a voter approval or disapproval. As our operating referendum expired, we basically just took this on and did not go out for a new voter-approved operating referendum. Does that make sense? We basically just moved from voter-approved. And that was one thing that we talked about during our prior truth and taxation meetings is as that expired, that basically authority moved from the voter-approved side just to the non-voter-approved side. So it was, it was very much similar to a wash. And as you can see here, it is equalized by the state. So I do want to point that out. So up to that $724 per pupil unit, about 37% of it actually comes from state aid. And then just shy of 63% comes from the levy side or our community. And the other larger piece in our district is something that's called long-term facility maintenance. And I know we, we've talked quite a bit about this, but it's always good as a reminder. So prior to this, we had basically what that was just called health and safety. We had the opportunity to levy for health and safety items. And more often than not, we, I think we were lucky if we ever received state aid on this. This was usually 100% levy at this point in time. In 2015, the legislature did take a peek at this and said, you know what? We need to kind of even the playing field, especially for our outstate districts. And what they created was called long-term facility maintenance. And it wrapped in the health and safety portion of this. But when they did that, they also said, you know what? We also want to provide a state contribution toward this. So this is, this has been a huge advantage, especially like I said, for outstate districts, for us to be able to handle our deferred maintenance items, our health and safety items. And, and we're receiving just shy of 43% state aid when we used to get 0% state aid. So this has been a fantastic benefit. And the way we've described, described, excuse me, long-term facility maintenance in the past is basically if you took your building, dumped it upside down and shook it, anything that stayed in place would be eligible for this long-term facility maintenance revenue. Any questions with those two categories?
I have a question. You said on the last two, it now has state aid. I kind of got the impression that prior to those two things, state was not aiding in those?
So that, and that's a great question. So there is an equalization factor for operating referendum, but there's only certain cap limits when, when you go out for voter approval. So that was still in place, but that equalization factor still fluctuates from year to year. With the long-term facility maintenance program, when it was prior, again, called health and safety alone, for us as a district, we didn't receive any state aid on that. It was all 100% levy or community-based revenue.
Yeah, so does that mean that maybe with those two in 2014 and 2015, it was, you had slightly less responsibility for local because we got more state? Accurate statement?
Yes and no. And with the long-term facility maintenance, this, it, it's slowly but surely ramped up. So right now, it's $380 per pupil unit. So what the state wanted to do was phase this in. So it wasn't such a huge tax impact because part of it was as well, giving outstate districts more opportunity for funding. So the health and safety funding was, we'll say, fairly limited. And they expanded the basically use of this. So the overall revenue increased. So even though there was a state aid portion, the levy portion did slightly increase over time as well. It's just, again, we're now able to capture state aid portion to help with that. If that makes sense.
Do you know what percentage of school districts operate without a voter-approved operating levy?
Let's see. Last, I think, that's a great question. I believe last December, when we took a look at this, and that might have changed, you know, over the course of a year. But I believe we were one out of, it was like 120, not quite 120, that did not have an additional operating referendum above and beyond the local optional revenue.
I was going to say it was about 30%-ish up in the district. It's, it's really a great reflection of how we've used our resources responsibly. That we don't feel the need at this point to go above and beyond, ask the voters for more of that local optional revenue. But in our region, I don't know of very many that don't have that.
Right.
East with, which that's great for us because we don't, aren't great for our community because we're being responsible for dollars.
Well, it was in our favor that what we had on the voter-approved was almost the exact same as what. So it worked out for us, and we didn't really notice it going away. So, so if we would have had a higher voter-approved one, then we would have had to think something a little differently.
Yeah, yeah. And I just took a peek at my notes as well. Again, back in December of last year, the average additional operating referendum was $450 per pupil unit. So that was above and beyond the $424. And every district has different needs and different purposes of what they utilize that for. But you're right, we have been extremely fortunate to be able to maintain that. And we're doing our best to be as fiscally responsible as possible with those funds.
These decisions are made once a year for a 12-month timeframe. So essentially, when we decide that it is for a January to December timeframe, do we do that every year? Is that right?
So for our taxpayers, correct. That's when the taxes are taken from, that they're gathered from the, the property owners. So that's when you're paying your taxes into the county. But we receive them on a fiscal year, which is a July 1 through a June 30. So for example, what we're setting now would be applicable to calendar year '22. But for us, the revenue will be applicable for July 1 of '22 through June 30 of '23.
And a typical operating levy. So if we were to decide we needed to go for an operating levy of voter-approved, typically runs around 10. It would be a 10-year. Whether it's typically before it expired, that's what we review with that. But the actual truth and taxation, what you're actually going to pay your taxes is the annual process you're talking through.
Some of the other categories within the general fund, we speak to these a little bit. I just want to. I just wanted to show you the different components of it. So operating capital, we do receive aid on this. 29% of it does come from levy. So this can help us for basically anything that's... Talking about new equipment or... This is different than long-term facility maintenance because we can do new things with them. Maybe we needed to renovate a space but add space, whatever that might look like. So this is that five-year capital outlay plan that we present to the board on an annual basis. And it's kind of that living, breathing document of we're always looking at how we can best utilize these funds. Other post-employment benefits, we call it OPEB. This was new to the district as of Pay '18. And when we say Pay '18, that means the '18, '19 business year for the school district. So this is an opportunity for school districts to levy dollars to help offset some of their liabilities regarding retirees. So for example, in our contracts, each one's a little bit different. But in our contracts, if you meet certain requirements and you retire with the district, you may be eligible for health insurance contributions up to age 65. So this is a way for us to help fund those liabilities that we have within the district. Building lease levy, again, that was new for the district as of Pay '18. The way we utilize this right now is for the community arena as well as Tink Larson Field. Safe Schools Levy, this is, we get 30, we receive $36 per pupil unit. And this helps us fund our police liaison officer. If we ever have a K-9 unit come in, this would be another opportunity to use those funds. We have an application called Crisis Go. It's another basically safety application that has all of our emergency safety plans on that and readily available to our staff. So those are just some uses of Safe Schools Levy. And then the last one I wanted to point out was the career and technical education. It's 17% aid, 83% levy. And basically, we receive about 35% reimbursement for our actual program costs. So this would be applicable to our AIG program, our welding and constructions program, our business program, our high step academy. So it's like our med tech academy that we do with South Central Service Cooperative. And I kind of dismissed one. But that's the other program that's a part of this. The other two components of the levy, so there's basically three buckets. We just talked about the general fund. The other two buckets are community education and debt service. So community education, this is largely driven by our census data. And so some of the things that this covers is our, like our after-school programming, our school-age care program, our early childhood family education, and also our preschool programming. Our debt service, this is really basically driven by what our debt repayment is based upon. And these are largely driven by board, or excuse me, voter-approved debts. So for example, when we went out for the $30 million bond for the renovation at the junior high schools, as well as some of our other sites, this is where all of that activity occurs with obtaining the revenue and then paying off that bond schedule. This is just a snapshot. I want to show you just kind of overall. This was in our preliminary budget. So you can see what really truly makes up our general fund revenue and the sources that drive our general fund. Again, this is just Fund One. So about 78% of it makes, is from state aid, 7.7% is federal, and 14.3% is local. I wanted to define that a little bit more. Actually, 8.2% of that is levy. And then the remainder are things like our gate receipts, our activity fees, medical assistance revenue. So really about 8.2% of our overall projected budget is driven by the levy in the general fund. And then this is a very quick snapshot of what our history has been for our pay levy. And again, we do include this in our presentation at Truth and Taxation. We actually include at least 10 years plus of what our historical data has been for our levy proposals. So you can see, you know, it just depends if we're implementing new programs or trying to maximize a levy. We've tried to be cautious about how that works or can we phase something in. You can kind of see what the history has been. I didn't include Pay '22 just yet because the reports just came out. And I know that there are some things missing. So I don't want to mislead the board one way or the other. And I feel like we'll have a better snapshot when we do bring that to the board in two weeks. Again, we would be asking you for a maximum, but you would still be able to see what the projected percentage amount would be. That was a very quick synopsis of what the levy process is. I'm happy to answer any questions or if you definitely need to digest. Please let me know. I'm happy to answer questions outside of the meeting as well.
Questions for Elizabeth? Otherwise, I know you probably do this for us almost every year, but it's kind of needed pretty much every year because there is so much that goes into this. And I know the process of, your next few months are so busy telling us what the final levy amount's gonna be. And I appreciate all that goes into that.
Well, it gets easier each time. It's a lot, but it makes sense. You start to sort of...
I've always heard even at the legislature, state government, there are very few people that really understand all of this. Was it Tom Melcher who was there for a long time and he's retired?
He's retired, but he's still in his presentations. He's the guy.
Yeah, he's the guy. He's the guy.
It's, school finance is very complicated. And it layers and changes every year based on statutory changes. So we're very fortunate to have Elizabeth and her team that are so strong in understanding these processes. And our administrators are so fiscally responsible that we put ourselves in good position to be able to serve our students where we need to. And like you said, we have, we've talked about this before. We've got some rightsizing to do in the next few years. But that's based on enrollment. And so we're not going to see a significant impact in dropping programs. It's just going to be making sure that we're staffed with the appropriate number of students that we're serving. And that's gonna be okay. So I feel really positive about where we are. And hopefully that was helpful. And then next month, we'll come back and we'll do a similar conversation, excuse me, with regards to kind of our facilities. We'll kind of maybe try the back and forth this fall to see how that works for the board in terms of keeping you really as a team of seven up to date, as well as the committee work in terms of facilities and finance particularly. Because those are, those are on the forefront of our next several months of decision.
Was that all that you had then? Before we move on, there's been some comments from those watching at home that the audio, it's hard to hear. So I encourage everyone to speak up a little bit. Those of you that are watching at home, I just want to thank you all for tuning in to all of our meetings. We really appreciate your interest and that we're able to, that there is technology that we can livestream and you can watch it versus coming in person. We are working on improving our audio. We hope to have that done. If not the next meeting, hopefully soon. So we are working on the audio and just keep tuning in. And also, we do record these meetings and post them on our website. And the audio is a lot better once it gets posted to our website. So we'll just keep working on trying to get those, all of our meeting videos posted in a timely manner. With that, we'll move on to our first week of school update.
Thank you for putting this on the agenda. What an exciting, exciting week it has been in so many great ways. Exhausting but exciting at the same time, right? And so we've had, really last week when our teachers came back and all of our staff was in the buildings, it was a great energy you could feel moving through the buildings. I'm getting ready for students to come back this week. Thank you for all the support. I thank the community for all the support for Coach Wendland. It's one of those things where you, it's unfortunate. Sometimes it's something like that has to happen in a public venue at the same right. I'm gonna say we're very fortunate, almost miracle, that the support and help was right there to support that. So and I appreciate the media coverage. You've been very respectful and professional. And so I started our, started our school year off with that Friday football game. It was something that you would never hope to have happen, but our emergency response plan, Mr. Head of Bar, Dr. Miller, and the entire team handled that as well as we possibly could have. And so we really appreciate all the work on that. But then this week, we've had the opportunity to welcome all of our students back to our building. So fourth and 12th graders came on Tuesday, had a chance to be at the junior senior high. As students were coming into the building in the morning and helping the seventh graders. I actually know where some of the classrooms are now, where some of the seventh graders are. Helped them find some of their rooms. That was kind of fun for me. And then getting over to West and seeing students come in. The start time worked out well and I was able to be at both places as students were kind of coming into the building. Lot of energy, smiles. People were just happy to be back and surrounded by friends, surrounded by their teachers. One of the themes we talked about, and I know you read this in your update, but maybe it was last week too. One of the themes we talked about was we need to meet kids where they are. And it's okay to be where you are. We're just not gonna stay there. And so it was all about this week, opening our arms, telling our kids it's gonna be okay. Here we are, welcome to '21, '22. There's gonna be some pickups. There's gonna be some challenges along the way, but we got your back. That kind of thing is really kind of the theme as we start this year. Our staff has really done an exceptional job of starting that off. I have not had very many conversations other than just how amazing, how exciting we are to have kids back this week. Transportation is something we're gonna have to be patient with. We are facing shortages of drivers, just like our other districts in the region and state. Our bus companies are doing an exceptional job of mixing, matching, making sure they get the kids where they need to go. We have not had any conversation yet about we won't be able to transport kids. But it was the kind of thing where I know we had some families that learned on Monday what bus they were gonna be on, and then on Tuesday morning, a different number showed up because of just the way they had to move things around. So frustrating, I know. As I was leaving Harley this morning, about quarter after eight, there were still a couple buses that I think were just pulling up. So they were a little bit late in those morning runs. That's always happened. That's normal for a day of school type thing. It may be a little bit exacerbated here because of some of the staffing issues our bus providers are working through. But we've had great conversations. They've been able to communicate what's happening. I know on Tuesday morning, when they had to change the bus route, our school and chair staff was out here making sure the kids knew this bus is going to West. Get on this one or get on this one in the morning. And so it's just kind of a team effort, getting everybody to go. But transportation is something that, I think this is an every-year thing, but we appreciate the patience. And those first few days, things are slow. Everyone's learning their routines. Everyone's learning their routes. And so that gets better every day. There's only one first day for the bus routing piece. We are having to remind some students that we do need to be wearing masks on buses. And that's not a local decision. That's a federal mandate. We can't do anything about that. And so we haven't had any issues with it, but it's just the things to remember and remind. So please, if you are riding buses, just for that few minutes here on the bus, we recommend, you know, we ask that you please follow that regulation. So we can stay with recommend perhaps in all the rest of our day, put that part of the process through that. In terms of moving things out, you know, the kids have been moving to and from school. We do have a couple crosswalks that are goofy right now. So we appreciate the patience with families. Can't do anything about that. But it's something we can, we can just positively work around. So on State Street and Seventh there, that cross is there where the stoplight was. They're not all the way finished with that intersection yet. So we're allowing kids to block up to cross State Street there. They've got the crossing guards there to support those kids. And the crosswalk that's gonna go right across from the junior senior high. Hopefully by the end of this month, those signals are in and starting to be installed. And then there will also be the, what they found is the traffic crossing down by the, the light down by the Bongars. There's less traffic crossing there than there is down by the Walmart. So the crossing guard's gonna be moving up to that area there to cross, help cross students crossing the junior senior highs. Because that's gonna be, it won't be a stoplight. It's just the same light we have out here. So we'll have a guard here to cross students on each one after school. So feeling good about that. Overall, just buzzing excitement. Activities moving. But I think tennis, soccer, junior high volleyball, volleyball is home time. It's like tonight, my people must be home night because I think we're hosting a lot of events. It's pretty exciting to see. I saw several of you Friday night. You know, the marching J's got a chance to perform. They were up at State Fair doing their thing. So just a great start to the school year in that regard. We are managing our pandemic. We're managing what we've got going on there. I think it's worth just mentioning. We are watching carefully what's happening. We're kind of establishing a little bit of a baseline of where are we coming into the school year at. I sent some figures to the board yesterday, but just for public knowledge, we have right now less than 1% of our students right now that are out at any of the buildings in district-wide with regards to positive cases, and none of them have been involved in school. And so they've been able to stay home and do what they need to do. If anything did come in contact, you know, activity or something, done the contact tracing appropriately, contacted families, and moving through what we need to do. We are still taking care of recommending masks for students who are unvaccinated or anybody in our building who are unvaccinated. We're working through that. We're working on making sure, as Ryan mentioned, we've increased airflow and increasing our HVAC in some of our buildings to help support that. One of the things that we've really been trying to communicate this week is that people really, continue students and staff stay home. I don't wanna have symptoms. And I think, and I'm using that language very purposefully. I'm saying symptoms and not sick. Because how often do we just have a cough and feel like, oh, I'm okay. I'm not sick. But for right now, if you have a symptom, please stay home until it goes away or you get an A test, just so that we know what's going on. It's just the more we can keep the positive cases outside of our buildings and the more we can just manage it as best we can. But we are watching, I said, less than 1% watching that number. None of our cases at this time are the same grade level or clustered, at the same building. It's, in fact, several of them will be back right away on Monday because we started this school year. We know what the baseline looks like. And we'll see how the rest of this, the rest of this week goes. One thing that is important, I didn't want to mention for anyone who might be curious. We talked at our last board meeting about, it had been like 40 hours fresh in my mind, about the testing opportunities that's coming down, that the state is really ripe for us. And at the last meeting, I was, I was thinking it was more of a mandatory. It was more of a thing which we don't, we don't want to be anticipating in that part of the process. But we do have, we do have the option to send them home with a student if they don't have access to a test somewhere else. Not a requirement, not that we're ever going to be making students do or from our end pushing. But we do have access to students if they don't have access to testing. So just contact your school office if you have a question. You need a test, you don't have access to one with that. So but it's been a really good start to the school year in that regard. Fortunately, that's only been just a small piece of our work because that's just been what it is. And we have plans in place for if kids have influenza, if we have other things that happen for our staff and students. And we're, we're gonna work through that in the next week. So we'll see where it goes. If something were to increase, we obviously would come to those board and have a conversation about what our next steps would be. But we're not there three days in. It's really exciting. I'm just, it's something special. This morning, I was at Harley. And you see that our youngest learners coming into the building and the wide-eyed kindergartners and first graders trying to find their room, build their, and what's your name? I don't know. What's your name? And that's everything. But they're just, it's just an exciting time. There's something about the school board and the superintendent that we really helped to make this happen with all of our teams. And the staff does all the work and no doubt about it that they, that we have a very, a 30,000-foot role, right? But it's just something that makes me feel pretty warm and happy when we get to one of the kids in those. That's what I wanted to share tonight.
So would we see your husband fly by with a 30,000 fellow? You don't want to answer that, do you?
Could you explain, because there was some contact tracing that happened this week. Could you explain what the process is when you get a phone call from school about, what can that phone call might be like?
Yeah, essentially, what we, what we're sharing with families is that, you know, there's potential exposure to a positive case for your child. And we run through the options for what quarantine could look like for that child. And that's, this is all linked on our webpage too. I put the full chart on there for us to see, in case anyone experiences a problem with that. But there's a couple other options. There's, there's, I'm just, okay, it sounds great. I'll see you tomorrow. Maybe because I'm vaccinated, maybe because I don't feel like I was running around. I know who it is and I wasn't around that person. You could quarantine for 14 days. We can provide support for you at home for that 14 days. And there's the seven-day with testing option there as well. If it's a household contact and the individual is not vaccinated, that is the only situation right now where we're saying yes to. right now where we're saying yes to quarantine. So if it's, if it's a, somebody you live with and you just can't isolate from, and you're not vaccinated, then it's a required quarantine. Otherwise, we, there is some parent discretion regarding to, when I stay at home, and the situations we've had thus far, we certainly have had some folks who are uncomfortable with that, but for the most part, that's been, that, um, understanding how we're, how we're gonna go keep kids in school.
Again, we can always revisit the plan as we need to.
Correct, yes, it's, it's the kind of thing, it's fortunate, it's the kind of thing that just changes every day, but we'll have a, we'll have a conversation Monday if we need to, but at this time.
Are those quarantine kind of guidelines for staff and students?
Other questions for Eric about first few days of school? Beautiful weather for the first few days of school. Recession's gonna be nice. All right, we're gonna take just a couple minute break here, Caitlin wants to re, refresh the Facebook stream so that we can hopefully improve the audio, so just take a minute here to let her do that. And then she'll restart the recording also. Great, it's odd, just, just give me a second here Caitlin. There's one particular parent who was making a lot of comments on Facebook about things.